Here.
Counselor number, here, Councilor Greider is not present. Councilor Prestizo is not present. Councilor Byers, here. Councilor Perry Miller, here. Mayor Ayers Bla, here. Mayor, you have a forum.
Thank you. Has anybody, by the way, checked in a call? Can anybody text her and just?
I'll go through it.
Yeah, make sure she knows that we're having a study session. And then just for the record, because I know the recording came on, Siri came on in the midst of all of that. Everybody is present at this time, except David and, excuse me, Councilor Prestizo and Councilor Greider. All right, so with that, let's go ahead and hand this off to Adrian to kick off this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilors. My name is Adrian Majeski, and I am the HR Director for Rogue Valley Council of Government. And I know a few familiar faces now, but I, I am new here in Oregon and new to this role as well. So it's a pleasure to be able to present tonight in front of council. And I'll actually turn it over to Wendy Brown to introduce her colleague and discuss what we're doing here.
Okay, great. Well, my name is Wendy Brown. I'm the owner of WBCP Inc. We are a public sector nonprofit recruiting firm. We've actually been in the Rogue Valley for about nineteen years now. So we've been doing public sector recruiting over twenty now. I started my career in public sector in County of Orange in California. So we do a lot of cities, counties, special districts, and we're in five different states now. The bulk of my business is in California, because that's where I'm from. That's kind of where I built my network. And the last four years, we've been growing, and we have about twenty employees now. We're based out of Rogue River. And but have a few other satellite offices in different states. So that's a little bit about our company. We have been tapped to work with Adrian and help you with your marketing and advertising campaign. So we have various services we offer. We offer full scope recruiting services. We offer partial search services. And if you take a full scope recruitment service and break it down into, into bite-sized pieces, we have option one, which is called a front-end advertising, which is the basically the front-end work that we would do on any full scope recruitment. And then option two would be, we would be doing all of that plus screening your first round of candidate or all your rounds of candidates and bring that to a shortlist meeting and saying, hey, this is your group of candidates. We turn it over usually to an internal HR partner at that point. And they end up taking our client through the recruitment process, or the final recruitment process. A full scope recruitment would be us managing and facilitating that interviewing process, taking it through a background or reference checks, guaranteeing the recruitment. I think you all had a meeting and made a decision that you would like us to help out with the marketing and advertising campaign in the very beginning. And we'll be partnering with Rogue Valley Cog to, I'm saying that right, right?
Yep.
RV Cog, to who's going to be facilitating the process from there. So part of the front-end advertising is really not just doing the headhunting and advertising and outreach and the pretty marketing brochures and all the things that come along with that. But it's also doing the framework of the recruitment, helping you put the framework together. What does this look like? Who are we going to be talking to? Who's going to be at the panels? What are the dates going to be? So that's part of why we're here tonight, is to help you get through that, help you strategize that. You're about the pros and cons, the different choices you make, and hopefully get you through to a very fast-track recruitment timeline that we put together for you this evening. The other part of that is also partnering with you a little bit on our stakeholder engagement. So, so both Adrian and I, whichever, whatever you decide that you want to do as far as stakeholder engagement. In our front-end advertising, we have a few hours baked into that as well. That'll be partnering with Adrian on that. She'll take the, the bulk of that work if there's a larger stakeholder engagement process that we decide on this evening. So, so I would say that the front end of any recruitment is really putting the whole framework of the recruitment together, identifying who's going to generally be on your panels. You can work some of those details out later on, but at least getting a general idea from this elected body, how you think that should look, setting that up. And probably a lot of conversation tonight is about walking in calendars and making sure we all agree on how that process should look. I have some recommendations, which is what we have in this document right here, about how we should get there. Page one is really kind of the agenda of the things that we want to get through today, which is stakeholder engagement and who that should be and what that should look like. So I'll be looking for input from you. Then we have the shortlist meeting, which I want to explain what that is, but in more detail. But that's really helping you identify what Adrian's going to be doing with you at that point in the recruitment, recruitment process, and why that's important to you. And then also, what do the panels look like? And here I'm talking about potentially, this is my initial recommendation, but you can do a recruitment any which way you'd like, is to do a virtual round of interviews first and then do in-person interviews with your final candidates. But those will be things that we decide tonight. But that's just kind of, at least getting us started somewhere, is a basic recommendation of how I would, I would typically see a recruitment like this unfold. I know that Jordan sent out a doodle poll with regards to dates. Unfortunately, not everybody hits any date on here. So, so what we did is, we listened to what you're looking for, and that's a fast-track recruitment, and then looked at these dates and said, how many can we get there? The most people we can get here? So we put together some dates. We'll talk to you about what that looks like. We also want to talk about if it makes sense for us to strategize a subcommittee for you in a fast-track recruitment. I highly recommend it because it gets things done quicker and faster. And, and who are going to be those people? And when do they participate, when the full council doesn't? So that'll be all decisions you guys all make tonight. So that's what we're hoping to get through. I hope we'll have a little bit of time left over so we can hear in this public setting what we're looking for in an ideal candidate, which is great. But I don't think we'll have as much time as I think you'd like. And so we are also offering some time for any council members or mayor to participate in a one-on-one with us or a one-on-two with us to get that from you in a private meeting, so we can really hear about what your hopes and dreams are on this next candidate. If we don't get enough time to talk about today, we would like to set that up as part of our stakeholder engagement. So that's it in a nutshell. That's kind of what we're hoping to get done today. So a lot, a lot of decisions that need to be made tonight.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So I, we, when we selected option one, I think what my focus was on was, you know, just the quality of the recruitment and developing a good candidate list of folks and the investment that, that your organization makes in that.
Yes.
And as I, as I hear about the framework, I, and I saw the price tag. It was, you know, it was very reasonable. So what I, what I want to make sure I'm understanding is that, to me, that was the focus, is the quality of that recruitment piece. And, and the framework itself is, is probably, I just want to hear you say it's the lesser part of a bigger body of work, which.
Of what I'm doing, absolutely. And I'd be happy to talk about that right now. I think it makes sense to talk about it, so you guys all know what we'll, what we'll be doing.
Yep.
That's the bulk of what we're doing tonight, is the framework. The advertising campaign, though, is really, it's a comprehensive advertising campaign. I should start off with maybe giving a little bit of my background before I got into public sector. I was in marketing and branding, communications. That was really, I think, the, what's made our organization kind of sets us apart from our competition, is our success. And I think that has a lot to do with our marketing and branding concepts that I've brought into recruitment. Because if you think about recruiting, it is really about targeting your audience. It's about selling your employer of choice brand. It's about making sure that I'm identifying from you what makes talent amazing and why somebody would want to bring their family here and set roots here and want to be a part of your community, and why they'd want to have this job. What's exciting about this job? What's exciting about talent? I live here, so I know there's a lot of really great things already, but, but I don't know talent really well. So you all have some great information that we are going to gain from you, both very quickly, I think, in a, in a, in a short period of time here. But the bulk of that will come from that stakeholder work when we meet one-on-one with you. And not only are you going to tell us why, how we're going to market that in a brochure, but you're also going to help us sell that when we start making our headhunting calls, right? So I'm going to talk about that comprehensive marketing strategy in just a minute. But those conversations we have is important, which is why it's important for us to possibly include other stakeholders. Well, I don't think that I hear a whole lot of different things than what I think you're looking for. But if I talk to a department head group, for example, we might hear just from a different lens, this is who we're looking for, right? These are some things that we'd really love to see in a leader moving forward. And again, it also helps us feel to say, hey, we had a chance to talk with staff. These are some things they're really looking excited about, right? So we also can pepper that into the advertising material as well, when we send that out. So that's really the basis of the stakeholder engagement that gives us the content for us to be able to really market you well. So an advertising campaign for a city manager recruitment will include a hard copy print because city managers are out there, and there's a lot of ways to get information because they're part of an association, and that they have them in every state. So we are going to do a print for every state, for every association, and every city manager in every state. I'm certainly going to make sure it goes out to all the city managers in Oregon. But we are also going to put some advertising out there on, online. So for things that would be specific to this audience in Oregon, but also nationally, there's a few different sites that we're, we're going to include in our advertising campaign. We also are LinkedIn recruiters, so we use our ability to be able to bully search on LinkedIn and search geographically. And sometimes it's background. When I'm talking to you, you might say it would be great if we had somebody with a really strong public works background because we're redoing our water system or something like that, right? Or hey, a really strong finance background would be fantastic. So we can really geographically appoint in different places and do specific searches to be able to bring forward a group of candidates that we can reach that access as well. We also have access to phone numbers. City managers are pretty easy to get contact information for. And so we certainly will be, we have a head, each of our recruiters has a headhunter on our team that does pick up the phone and makes phone calls. I'll be doing that as well. And so will Levi. I'm sorry to forget to introduce Levi. Levi is one of my associate recruiters. He'll be partnering with me on this recruitment. He's also an Oregon native, so, so he'll be partnering with me, and he was fantastic on the phone. So he knows how to really get people excited about opportunities, so.
So I would just want to ask a money question, if I may.
Sure.
So in our, in our meeting, when we discussed this, we talked about RV Cog managing the project. So I would imagine that if there was any potential to come in over budget, you all would be managing those discussions and, and, and making recommendations on what to focus on and, and, or whether or not we should extend the budget, et cetera, et cetera, right? That'll be handled between your firm and RV Cog as the managers of this project. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and we'd be looking to you for a recommendation on that.
Yes, and I will be really cognizant of, you know, RV Cog, we bill at our loaded rate, and I want to make sure that I'm not interacting with Wendy during the times that she'll be providing certain services. But there will be amount, an amount of oversight, because I believe that is what the council had requested, that RV Cog can be the umbrella during the recruitment. So there will be times when both Wendy and I are providing a service together. But we've agreed that if there are stakeholders or one-on-one council meetings with council members, we may do a couple together, and then I will go off and do those on my own. So we'll try to be aware, like during, with the budget, we're trying to make sure we're not overlapping services and making this more expensive than what the council had originally agreed to.
And as far as our perspective, we have a cap on expenses. That's what our contract says. So if we needed to go above that, because we were told that that's really a direction that you'd like to go in, then we would be working with you to make sure, hey, if you want us to do that, I don't, we don't have a budget for that. We'd need to go above that, but we, we do this all day long. I don't think that we need more than what's in the budget.
Yeah, oftentimes when you're talking about framework, it always sounds bigger than it actually is. But I just, I, I do also would want to make sure that the council has a voice in, if you guys, I mean, all of these pieces are important to us. We've, we've all agreed that stakeholder and profiling the candidate is important. We all agreed that the recruiting process is important and the advertising is important. So we would want to, correct me if I'm wrong, council, we would want to know if there was more budget needed to be successful in what we're stepping out to do. And so that, don't let my question make it sound like, you know, this is, you know, don't, don't come back to us with a, with a question for more budget, but.
I, I don't think you'll need more budget.
Okay.
But I, and just so you know, I also used to work for a print broker, and I worked for, so I know how to do print very affordably, and I'm very good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And we do a very well-oiled advertising and marketing campaign. But if I felt you were missing on something, I would definitely bring it forward.
Good to hear. Like I said, framework always sounds bigger than it actually is.
And it definitely is, and I know kind of what, this is what we worked on together this morning. It is very detailed, but, but to be honest, it really is as simple as, if you'll make a few decisions tonight, we can take over from there. We would like to know the, the direction of council. And it seems a little heavy because there are some options in here, but there are. I, I mean, I think if you guys want to, we've been told, you know, that we want a quick process. We, I think we're hoping for some decisions and guidance tonight from council so that we can just take the ball and run with it. But I think it looks heavy because, because we wanted to build in, you know, the options for council to give the direction. And I think it'll be a really simple process, though, to be honest.
Awesome. Thank you.
And I, I will say that this process in, in this timeline that we've set up for you is really cutting out about, I'm going to say, two or three weeks. So if you don't make a decision tonight on dates, this recruitment will have to get pushed out. So we could still keep the timeline, but it's going to have to get, the whole thing will have to get pushed out because this is a very aggressive timeline, because we're talking in this timeline that we'd actually get the advertising campaign rolled out by the thirtieth. Great, so, okay.
Counselor.
As far as our time, I think we all agree that we show up for special meetings to, to, so that we don't lose that timeline, so you don't have to wait till the next scheduled meeting, if needed.
Thank you, counselor. And I know that Jordan had sent an email to us where she was offering up certain times where we could meet one-on-one during a time when she would typically meet with you. So I think there's a carved-out time if we would need to do some type of, you know, informing that ideal candidate. So thank you for offering additional times as well, and we'll definitely reach out to help streamline.
I'll just say, for individual time, I think, like, for example, I'm a lot more flexible than the one, you know, she only has one every two weeks scheduled with me, but I'm, I'm very flexible. I think getting, getting moving, moving on this is critical.
Thank you. All right, I just want to touch on a couple of other things that, well, I think that we'll kind of get to the other things as we're walking through this agenda on the first page. Let me just tell you what these, these pages are. So the first page is talking about stakeholder engagement, telling you what a shortlist meeting is and why that's important to you in the interviews. The second page is basically just this timeline broken down into more details. Okay, but it's the timeline itself and all the different things that happen in a recruitment process in a bulleted format. Okay, so I'm going to stick with the first page right now, but we might need to flip to the back page just to kind of get a sense of some other, other things. So we talked about stakeholder engagement and how that really is helpful in us identifying the ideal candidate and helping us sell your organization as an employer of choice. And so who would you like to be, who would you like to have involved in that? We talked about, for sure, it sounds like there might be some interest in council members and the mayor possibly setting up individual one-on-ones after this public meeting. Does that make sense, that we would try and set that up for everybody?
For stakeholder discussions?
Yeah, so you can all have a one-on-one with the recruiter or one-on-two. Just give us an idea of characteristics of an ideal candidate. Make it available, and you don't have to do it if you don't want to. If you feel like you get everything out this evening.
Counselor Namrath. Yeah, I was just going to say, I think, you know, small meetings, there's, you know, the, I think you said there was going to be one big meeting to start out or not.
I think that's this one.
Oh, that's this one, okay. I, I was just saying, I'm, I'm also comfortable to, let me two or three counselors at a time to help compress the schedule. I'm just as flexible as.
So because we're on a fast track, sometimes it takes longer to put that together than it would be just calling you individually.
However, we, we actually have scheduled meetings with the city manager, so maybe we can utilize that time space, because they're already set up.
Okay.
So that's.
Is that all? Will we get through all that next week?
Yeah, so.
That'd be great.
Three of us are on Monday, and then what's the other group?
And I set the dates.
She did send us the dates.
Yeah, but I, next week.
Okay.
I was just saying that we haven't always met that time, so, you know, if it's Zoom, it's fairly easy.
Yeah, for us, it's.
For lunch.
Yeah, for our Monday group, we're pretty consistent, so, yeah. I mean, if that makes it easier, that's why I'm.
Yeah, and of course, if we feel like we've got enough through this evening that you don't need to participate, then that's fine, too. So it's really your, your personal interest. So other things that we can offer you is putting together a survey monkey for all employees to participate. And basically what that is, is a list of thirty competencies that say, you know, what are you looking for in an ideal candidate? We'll have some subject substantive technical strengths in there, such as city management, administration, budget, oversight responsibilities, public works background, or something like that. Other things that I hear from you that you're looking for. And then we kind of get into all of those other, what most people call soft skills, which it doesn't matter how technically capable you are, but really are the key things to your success. Who are you in the community, community engagement? So there's about thirty-five core competencies in the surveys. Which seven would you like, if you had to only pick seven of these, what are they? So that helps you kind of see where everybody is. If they could only have seven of these, what does that look like? So we'll be able to get the results of that to Adrian. Those are usually shared when you get to the shortlist meeting, which we'll talk about in a little bit. But that's kind of midpoint in the recruitment process. And so you get to see not only where your employees are, but also what, if you wanted to, we could do a community survey. We don't find that in, in these situations, a lot of people respond, which is fine. It gives people who want to have a voice, a voice, and it might just be a handful of people. There's usually only times where I see lots of participation when there's lots of cultural challenges, maybe, or major things happening in a community that's creating a lot of interest and engagement, that we might get a larger group. So I don't want you to feel disappointed because we put it on your website and got the word out, and only five people responded, because I think it's more about, did we want to try engage? Did we try to engage? And I, I just see sometimes people get disappointed, and since I won't be there to talk about it when you get better at this, I don't want you to feel bad about that. That sometimes it's not a bad thing, when you have, you know, everybody really happy in your community, and they don't feel like they really have to weigh in, because they trust you. And, you know, so those are typically what I see, and I just don't want you to feel bad if you don't get a large group to respond.
I think from my view, it, it's as important for us to be able to say that we, we are wanting to hear from community and leave it to the, leave everybody, leave that choice up to everybody.
That's great, but, and so what will, if you're interested in doing that, I'd love to hear from all of you. If that's something that interests you, we could put together a survey monkey for both employees and your community. And we can also do an open text box on there, if you're interested, like, what else would you like to look for? And some people say, well, I want all thirty-five competencies above, which is fine. Some people like to have an opportunity to have a little cathartic process and say, hey, I really want this or that, and I'm really tired of seeing this, which is fine. That's also a way to kind of get a sense of what your community's pulse is. But I just want to let you know, it's an open text box. People can say what they want in it. And sometimes you might want to even put in something specific. If you've been wanting to, to survey your community, maybe you'll throw another question in there, like, what do you think are the three biggest challenges that our community should be working on? So you could throw another question there. I wouldn't make it any longer than that. That's about a five-minute timeframe you're asking from your constituents or your employees. And three to five minutes is really what most people are expecting to do in a survey, so.
Counselor Perry Miller?
I love that idea. I would love it if there would be some way that we could either ask the question or ensure that it was all talent constituents who were weighing in, just so that we could make sure, like, are these folks weighing in from Medford or Ashland or, you know, Phoenix? Just, I think that would be really helpful.
I don't think that's possible, if we make it a public link, that we could confirm that.
Maybe not confirm, but we could ask.
So we, sure.
Yeah.
Sure, absolutely, okay.
Can we ask for zip codes of the respondents? I suppose they could.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, I suppose they could misinform if they were really pushy, but, yeah. We, we do get a lot of, you know, interjection from our larger community, community neighbors that aren't always welcome, you know, but, so.
Okay.
Good to ask, anyway.
Sure. Yeah, we can incorporate that in the survey, no problem. And then I'll, I'll have Maria work, sorry, Andrea work, apologize.
Adrian.
Adrian, sorry. I'm terrible. I'm sorry. Adrian, I was just telling, I'll leave on the way down here. I'm terrible with names. So I've got all of your pictures and your names, so I'm sorry. I have to have your picture and your name down here. All right, so, thank you.
Counselor Namrath?
Um, yeah, I'm just wondering, I think surveying the community at large is great, and, and the employees is great and necessary. I think I would also kind of add to that list, and I don't know if that would, these would be like short one-on-one interviews or what, but, you know, community leaders.
Community leaders.
Yeah.
So I think that would be fine.
Nonprofit leaders.
We've even done public meetings where we could just say an open, public meeting.
Well, what I'm thinking of is, you know, as you're, as you're talking to people, to try to get a feel for what the vibe of talent is. I think the, kind of like the one, a short phone call might be more conducive for you to get kind of a, kind of a pulse.
In the importance of time, and it's always ideal to have these before you open up a recruitment. It's not, it's not terrible if you don't, because it's still in the form of this and the selection process. But in the, in the interest of wanting to get that done, do you think that we could do that in an invitation to a Zoom meeting?
Or what, what would be the difference of them being invited to take the survey monkey? Like, what, what is the qualitative difference is what I want?
Well, because that's kind of controlled, and this would be more of a, you know, short conversation. That would, you know, kind of the give and take to, to just help, help you all kind of understand what we're, what we're about.
No, I think it's great, and I think it's perfect, because that's really that three sixty, right?
Yeah.
What, how many do you think that would be? Because that would help me determine whether or not one-on-ones make sense, or if a Zoom call would make a difference.
Three to five people.
I just have a concern that we are doing something for community leaders that we're not doing for our staff. And, and that could be, that could have a perception issue that I would want to be sensitive to. So.
I can assume it would be.
That you'll be talking to staff as well, interviews?
We're, well, we're going to go there next, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I thought, I thought the solution there was going to be the survey monkey and.
The survey monkey would be all staff, but I was going to ask if we could do a department head meeting.
Right, okay, now I'm feeling better.
Okay.
Counselor Perry Miller?
That answered my question.
Yeah.
And that was the portion where I discussed that Wendy and I may do a few things together, and then I'll just take it on, and that could be that department head meeting where we might do a couple together. And then I will go ahead and just finish shopping, doing the department heads for their, the characteristics of the ideal candidate they're looking for.
I think that's a great solution.
Okay, great. All right, so community leaders, you'll be getting three to five to us for, for that. And I think that's one that you could take on individually. And I, I could do one with you if you wanted to, but I think that the questions are the same. It's just different hearing it from different lenses. So the department head is one that it sounds like you're interested in doing that one. Okay.
And then you said community leaders as well?
Yeah. And who's going to get us the list of the three to five? Do you all want to weigh in on that, or do you want to talk about that right now?
I'll defer to my colleagues on that.
Yeah, I'd look, you know, I'm going to get Colossian for Teresa, Talent Maker City, Rogue Climate. Those are three that come to mind.
I think Rogue Action Center. A leader of a faith organization would be a good thing. And.
Phoenix Talent School District.
The school district, yeah.
Good thought.
What's that?
I think that was five.
Yeah.
Maybe six.
Yeah, one of our school boards that represents talent. With her. Yeah, that makes sense.
And I wasn't tracking all those, because it was kind of really quick. So it, Jordan, did you have to capture all that, or no?
I captured Phoenix Talent School District, Rogue Climate, Posion for Teresa, Talent Maker City. I heard RAP, I also heard Faith Group. Both of those on there. And there's a different faith group that council is thinking about which has a particular combination in the area.
Is there, is there a faith-based organization you'd like us to reach out to?
There are, I, I, I wouldn't be able to answer that question. There's the mosque, there's, there's, there's a couple of Christian fellowships. I think that I, there's not a conflict. Does anybody have any thoughts on this? I just want to make sure that we are being inclusive.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering if there's another group that works with, like, a lot of faith-based groups. The Tibet Habitat for Humanity work with faith-based groups.
They do, but I think they're more, well, I'm, I'm doing Catholic charities.
Yeah, okay, me, too. So in other words, I was wondering if there's like an umbrella kind of organization that could suggest somebody.
Sometimes it's easier to think about instead of like the denomination, like which ones are very involved in communities issues, feeding, beating the, those are, are less fortunate. Housing, those that, I don't know if there's a faith-based organization in your community that tends to be more community-engaged, and that might, might help you kind of narrow it down a little bit.
It was, but they're not, yeah, they're not here anymore.
If that's not something you want to decide right now?
Yeah, I would say that's.
Um, if that's not something you want to decide right now, can you, can you get something to Jordan? Okay. And then I think the other thing is, is you're having a hard time about being exclusive or inclusive. We could just do a clergy meeting.
Yeah.
I've done that before in communities, so uh, we could just invite everybody. So, yeah, into a Zoom, it's great. They say nice prayers and it's great. All right, so let's let us know, um, if you wanted to, if it makes sense, oh, this one would be great. This is good, it gets a full song, you know, on faith-based community and our, and so uh, Jordan, if you could get that list over to us, that would be fantastic. And depending on how long that list is, if it's over five, I'm just gonna do a group meeting. That's okay with everybody, okay? And I think that's one you could even do in person if that was a preference. Um, because local thing, it's nice that we're local. Um, so I think that gets us through the stakeholder engagement other than just solidifying department heads. I think that's an obvious list for you, Jordan, or do you need to talk about that?
Um, no, I can, but I'm gonna just do a quick verbal because what's gonna happen tonight? Whatever we discuss and study session, I will bring forward in our regular meeting to be formally voted upon. Okay, so I'm just gonna recite out loud that council is consensus around employee survey, community survey. Um, and in that community survey, there's gonna be an open text box, the three biggest challenges and a question around resident. Um, and then we'll have a meeting with community leaders and a meeting. Am I tracking right?
Beautiful. Okay. And then um, no question about who that should be included in that department head? Or you're just bringing that list forward to just get counsel to approve who should be on the department head list?
I'm assuming all department heads.
Okay. And then we will also, if you could add to that, um, after we get through this evening, if you could add to that potential individual invitations out, reply by this date for you to all set up a meeting with either myself or um, Adrian. Okay. All right, so I guess let's pass our stakeholder piece, yeah, all right. So now we're gonna talk about shortlist meetings. So that is after we do all of our hard work to get you great applicants. By the way, you'll be able to use our applicant tracking system too. So that's something that, that Adrian will have access to as well as Jordan. And um, and uh, they will come through that applicant tracking system. And Adrian will be reviewing them and determining which folks she wants to have a deeper conversation with. That will identify which candidates she wants to bring forward for you to consider to invite the interview. In most recruitments like that, you'll probably get more than you'll actually invite to interview in that shortlist meeting. If you're fortunate and you have a lot of good interest. Uh, that's usually somewhere between ten and thirteen maybe for a small community like this. Of of strong candidates, there's usually gonna be maybe a top five that look really good. And maybe a second group that are strong, but maybe not as strong, that she'll be presenting to you um, in that shortlist meeting. Uh, she'll be advocating and talking to you about the candidates, helping you understand the conversation she's had with them and why she's recommending them. And then you'll be voting on as a group, how, you know, who you're bringing forward. So sometimes that's really easy to do in a tally format, to go around and say yes, no, or maybe on this candidate. So that's kind of how I do it, Adrian might have a different way, but not everybody agrees that the candidate, on the candidate says kind of has to be that majority process, unless you'd identify that you want to have a subcommittee at that meeting. And that's perfectly fine, and I think that works really well. I'm not sure how you all feel about a subcommittee making that decision on who moves forward to an interview. But that is uh, my next question for you to decide on. You want to talk about that a little bit?
We discussed that in a two and a half hour process.
It's a two, it's about a two and a half hour meeting.
Just that I missed the last meeting, so I missed the previous conversation that you all had about this. But personally, I thought that the subcommittee format worked really well last time. So if other people feel the same, then I would be moving forward with that, or we could do full council.
Counselor Clark?
I also uh, thought the subcommittee um, approach worked well for uh, the trying of the process last time and I'm entirely comfortable with that approach.
Counselor Byers?
I agree.
Great, now who wants to be on the subcommittee? That's our next question.
I'm, I I will do that.
Okay.
Do we want to invite the interim city manager?
I don't object to it, but I do think that um, the council president and the interim, uh, excuse me, the uh, vice chair um, is a good recommendation if you're both available, yes.
And council president, vice chair and council president.
And I will say that um, one of the things that I think makes this as objective as possible is if we're using a scoring system based on the survey that you, you know, based on outcomes from the survey, writing a scoring system um, that allows us to check boxes and um, and measure against the feedback that we're getting from the stakeholders.
Um, the, we had an excellent scoring system provided to us by RV cog in our last um, round of doing this.
Yeah, I wonder if like it works though.
Did we hit it at the sub-level? I can't remember.
I wasn't on the subcommittee, so I don't know, but.
Yeah, it works well, I, I can't, I think we did. Yeah, um, I, it, yeah, it's a good approach.
Zero to seven.
Yeah, no, I think that was, no, that was the, um, that's, that's the job review, that's the performance review. It all starts to blur together.
Yeah. And I'm sorry to interrupt, Hector, we did have Counselor Greider join us, she's in the audience. If we can promote her to panelist to listen in. Oh, already on it.
Hey, how do I see the um?
You acceptable screen?
Oh, there we go, thank, uh, something happened there, I must have touched the right thing, but yeah, okay.
All right, so I will let you guys work out the details about what happens at the shortlist meeting and um, but the subcommittees probably is what we think that needs to happen tonight. If we could decide on who's gonna be there, did we just decide it's gonna be mayor, vice chair and council president? Okay.
Um, and possibly the interim city manager.
Yes. Which I meant to say at the beginning of this meeting, I'm sorry, council, uh, that we'll have that discussion as well. We have a um, a candidate for the interim role, so that will be a separate discussion, but I just realized that as I brought, brought him up.
And of course, that's based on the assumption that he is not intending to um, apply for the position, so, yeah, okay. Great.
Great, so the subcommittee uh, will be identifying the group that's gonna be moving forward. Are you okay with the subcommittee also making final decisions and approving of the brochure?
Yeah, mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm realizing I have a thought. I'm just, why would we include the interim city manager in the subcommittee? Just because we didn't last time and I don't know why we would.
I'll tell you a really good reason why I would want somebody like that in that meeting is they're subject matter experts, hopefully. I don't know who your interim is. Um, and as much as I've been in public sector for twenty years, um, and I've hired a lot, helped hire a lot of city managers, I haven't sat in that seat, it's a, it's a different seat. Um, and I think that they can influence from a administrative perspective, but I don't think they would be a voting member in that group.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that as a, as a staff expert, maybe.
Last time, didn't we not have the interim city manager join us because they had also applied for the position?
Yeah.
Another reason. Was that the reason though, or just?
I don't think it, I don't think it ever came up.
Yeah.
To be honest, because, because the interim did apply for the position at first. Um, but what I would say is, I, what I was about to say is exactly what you just said, Wendy, is that as a, as a staff expert, as a, you know, as part of your group, um, rather than the subcommittee group, it makes perfect sense.
And not as a voting member, that doesn't make sense to me.
Especially, no, they would.
August, and then that will be happening in October, that's just a couple of times.
Four people can be pretty, can, can be.
I think the interim will be able to, you know, be a cultivator of thought. Hey, maybe you could be thinking about this or hey, I really like that certificate. I don't know if you know this about that certificate, but that's amazing that they've got that, right? Those are the kinds of things that they could.
Being able to ask somebody those kinds of questions is a great idea.
Thank you, that makes me feel better.
Yeah, 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 thank you for bringing it up, yeah.
All right, uh, so we will go ahead and have the subcommittee then take those, make those kinds of decisions too and ruling out the recruitment process. Right now, we're getting almost done here, we've got some uh, interview dates we need to look at. So I'm gonna um, talk about the framework first and then I'm gonna talk about the potential dates. So my recommendation is once we get to that, I mean, that we've identified the candidates at the shortlist meeting, we're gonna be inviting them to, what I'm gonna recommend is a virtual meeting. I know that today we don't have to have virtual meetings, I know everybody prefers in-person. But there's a lot of pros to doing that. Uh, for one, it's much more cost-effective to your taxpayers, less people drop out. Uh, more people are inclined to come when they're one of a few versus one of many. Uh, because you're really asking, if you're gonna bring them out for the first interview, you usually bring them out back-to-back, first and second. So you don't have to bring them out again, so that's asking a candidate to take three or four days out of their day. They're one of seven, they're like, yeah, I thought it was gonna be nice, but I'm not. Or something came up and it's just, you know, and a lot of city managers or department heads, I'm assuming, I'm not sure exactly where your flexibility is there, um, get voluntold to do a lot of things at the last minute. So um, you don't want your best candidates dropping out because they have commitments someplace else. Now, if they're one of you and they're one of, you know, a few and you brought, bring them out and we give them enough time to bake that into their, their calendar, then I think that makes more sense. So I'm recommending for lots of reasons that benefit you is do a virtual interview. Um, and um, virtual interviews panels are typically made up of subject matter experts, people that you want to hear from a different lens from, sometimes that can be a couple of department heads. Uh, sometimes that could be as an interim city manager, sometimes it's a former city manager. Um, and it could be that subcommittee. Um, so it could be the elected officials making the final decision at the end of the day, but listening from everybody else. Or you could have two separate panels that day of subject matter experts slash other lenses with the subcommittee and Oracle Council on a virtual meeting. And just so you know that we're asking, it's usually a full day, it's H five. So that's why I'm thinking a subcommittee might work better. In a two-panel process, these, but the panel over here that are lenses are not making final decisions. They're giving input and that's where it's really important that that's well facilitated, right? Like, we would love to hear who you would, how you would rank these candidates based on the experience that you've had with them today. One panel members, top three might not be the other panel members' top three, typically that's how it goes. And it's kind of nice to see that. Um, but it also is informative when you see somebody's number one is somebody else's number five and you get to hear why. Okay, so now you've had that person on that panel for a reason and that person's coming from, except they've got, he or she has some concerns and questions around that person, around this. That's informative to help you if that person moves forward to an interview to ask a, you know, very important follow-up questions to kind of dig into those question marks or concerns that were left on the table from that group before. And if that person becomes your final candidate, it also helps you with your onboarding information. Whether that be a community member, a community stakeholder, an employee, or whoever it might be, it informs you. So um, in a two-panel process in a virtual environment, my recommendation would be to have the subcommittee or, or, I think, I don't think you're gonna want the whole council because it's a full-day commitment. But I'm, I'm gonna stick with the subcommittee right now. Uh, meet with that group in the morning, talk to them about what we're looking for in an ideal candidate, thank them for being there because it's a long day commitment. And then at the end of the day, meet with that group and say, where are you and what's your recommendation for us? As far as bringing that down to another group. That subcommittee, I recommend, would also be interviewing those candidates in a different panel. So if a candidate's interviewing with this, this panel over here at nine o'clock, they might be interviewing with this panel over here at ten o'clock. At the end of the day, you've now met all the candidates as well and now you're getting input from other people into that decision-making process. So sometimes that might be even another city manager from another nearby city. I think that we tossed around some ideas the other day about who they might be on that panel. That way you get a lot of subject matter experts and there's so many benefits that come from that, but it has to be facilitated well, right? So the benefits that come from that is if whoever you end up hiring, these people have already met, even though they were only with them for an hour, they become the champions for them in that, in your community. And they become the champions for this person in your organization. So it really onboards that candidate so much better and it gives them a little leg up and people in the community are already rooting and supporting them because they had a, they had a part of the process. So there's really tons of benefits that come from that. Um, plus, I like to hear from more people than less because it's a big decision for you. Um, so why not get more information even if you don't necessarily agree? At least it informs you, right? So that would be the, that would be the time at the end of that day when you debrief with that panel, you make a decision on who you'd like to move forward to a final interview. That could include the other panels, you hope, assuming that they have a top three-ish that they usually have. It's usually somewhere around three, sometimes it's four, sometimes they're the candidate on the fence or they could have answered some questions better, but they might be worthwhile seeing. Typically, a subcommittee will move forward more than less because they want the council to be able to have a bigger vote and say in the process. So if there's usually somebody on the fence, I usually see that being pushed forward in a subcommittee slash um, stakeholder panel process. So that's all things that Adrian will be um, will be working with you on to kind of get you through that thought process and selection process. Okay?
So what are we talking about, the major voting candidates today?
I hope that we can do that today, but I think that we don't have to make final decisions today. You certainly can be thinking about it and maybe when you bring back the, the, all the details, maybe at least we can come together with some general ideas of what we want that to look like. Is it two panels? Is it all council, is a subcommittee and a sub, and a stakeholder panel? Like what can we at least decide what we're looking at on a virtual panel and who we think we might want to have there? And then I think we can work on some details after we leave tonight and come together with a recommendation to your next meeting.
Were, um, were the discussion about stakeholder panels discussed with RV cog? Um, I'm very important about it the other day, was RV cog involved in that discussion? So the reason I asked that, Adrian, is we talked about involving staff in interview processes and the advice from RV cog was that can also cause challenges. And I wanna, um, I wanna know if you've provided input um, on that. Um, and, and, and because we're talking about it, maybe you can share what those challenges can be. Make sure that we are, um, that we are setting ourselves up for the possible outcome where everybody feels.
Correct, mayor, thank you. And yes, we did previously discuss it. I think that it's important that we involve staff and, and department heads with searching for the ideal candidate and receive that feedback that could also help for the advertisement. Uh, but I do think that I want to be really careful and it is RV cog's recommendation that as we look to the interviews of the candidates, we may want to use the feedback that we got from department heads as a guiding light. But um, I think as far as inviting department heads into the process, we could get a little sticky on just a feeling of, well, these are, were the things I looked for, this was the candidate, why was that person not chosen? And it could create a bad, getting, starting off on the wrong foot in a way was something that Anne Marie and I also discussed when we, when we first talked about this. So I think it's extremely important, I know it's important to council, to um, to get feedback from our staff and from our department heads. And I think we are doing that in the beginning of the process. But as we start to look at uh, our candidates, I think that uh, like Wendy said, inviting certain stakeholders in the community, um, previous city managers or city managers from other jurisdictions would be a great way. Uh, but I think that our first filter would be the first goal is department heads and receive our feedback there and then have council decide as we get further into the process. It's important when you do a welcome feedback that you let, you kind of close the feedback loop and you set the expectation of, you know, maybe we're looking for feedback, but we will make the final decision is a great way to just set the expectation where somebody doesn't feel in a way burned. If I was asked to participate and I said, I love this candidate and why did they not choose them? And I think that's just because it gets foggy where there are expectations of, we love feedback, we want to use it as our guiding light and it'll ultimately be up to, you know, council to make that decision.
And if I were to add to that, I would say it really depends on culture and where things are. Um, and you know, that can be a big deciding factor for you. And I do think that it could go unfortunately that direction if, if again, when I mentioned it needs to be facilitated well, like, hey, this is, you're giving input and we really care about your thoughts. That you, you, council is the decision-maker and we will wait. You genuinely want to hear what they have to say, but their decisions are not final and just because they're your number one doesn't necessarily, but sometimes it depends on culture. So it really depends on where you're at right now and how comfortable you are with that. And are you creating some challenges for yourselves? Let's just not do it if that, if that is the case.
One of the things that occurs to me is that uh, we're gonna get some pretty good information um, with the surveys that I think we're gonna be integrating into our scoring system. Um, and I wonder if, if then looking at the interview panels for.
Looking at the interview panels for a different point of view, like a city manager from another jurisdiction or. Um. Or a department head from another jurisdiction or, or, or any of the other thoughts that, that are being brought up. Uh one of the things I, that I. And please weigh in y'all, um is that I like to see as much contrast as we can get. And instead of going to the same well over and over. Um but, but I really did hear you loud and clear when you brought that up in the last conversation, we were talking about staff input and how to, how to make that. Um, you know, a, a, a good process. And I, I just really felt like this, that needed to be, you know, brought into the discussion. Counselor Penomra? Uh I'm sorry, don't forget to call me out if, if I'm, my back's turned to you. Who is that? Counselor Byers?
Uh, thank you. So I'm recalling in our last process like this, again, RV cog compiled a list of questions that we stuck to. Pretty closely as like a guiding structure for all the interviews. And I'm wondering if perhaps the um especially the department head, but perhaps staff. There could be an opportunity for them to say, if you could ask candidates one question, what would it be? And potentially we could aggregate some of those into a question that can then be passed on. I think that there are plenty of things that um.
Are you saying incorporating that in the survey?
Yes.
Oh, that'd be good.
Yeah, I, I'm sure there are plenty of perspectives that I wouldn't even think to ask from, but perhaps this could be a middle ground.
Love that. I'd like that.
Yeah, I love that too.
Counselor Perry Miller, I'm sorry, Counselor Penomra and then Counselor Perry Miller.
I was only gonna say that um I would appreciate having, you know, subject matter experts um on, on that panel. Cause I'm, I'm in a technical field myself and great managers just can't tell. When somebody talks a good game. Yeah, so I, I do appreciate that.
Uh Counselor Perry Miller and then Jordan.
Um I always kinda recommend just for time's sake, it sounds like council is in general consensus pro having a two panel. Method for this first round. And then maybe discussion of maybe about that second state of their panels can be a discussion for later on.
I think that that makes sense. Okay, so everybody a chance to think about it. Can we, um when's your next meeting?
Um, the next scheduled meeting is September sixth, so we can do a special meeting in between.
Okay.
Um I do wanna comment that maybe the candidate profile is something that we could probably go back to a public meeting. Uh or the brochure to agree, um just to be able to do executive sessions later on. Uh. Explain that. Uh sorry, working with our attorney, you know, we wanna make sure the public has a chance to comment on the policy directive of the hiring. And so the formal adopting of the brochure um could be that in a public meeting, then uh. Helps, we can then meet the criteria to have executive sessions later for the actual interviews.
Which is what we've done in the past.
Exactly, yeah.
Uh so when would that public meeting be?
Whenever you go to the ready, the brochure.
Okay. Okay. So just add that into the timeline?
Yeah, okay. Um and we can do that with just the subcommittee. So Dave, shout out if I'm looking anything wrong.
Yep, Dave, please.
I certainly want I hope you're gonna be in the county to talk about these panels and even the subcommittee is open meetings law.
Right.
Um your families um are gonna be open meetings, then and that's gonna make it difficult for some interviewees. Uh unless you make sure that they are fewer than. Four councilmen which had each panel. Uh so I'm not here to talk about that, but that needs to be taken into account to separate that.
And Dave, can I ask a quick question? So we can't do an executive session for final interviews?
You can do an executive session. Uh if you have gone through the process that Jordan was talking about, setting up. Your uh policies, the frameworks, what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Be in a public meeting, and that's what partially that if you're gonna do tonight.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think, I think I would highly recommend an executive session. And I think a lot of people in city that are hired, that are currently city managers right now will not apply if they think they're gonna be in a.
I, real quick question about that. The last round we did, I had to actually go back. Uh cause I, I thought we had interviewed an executive session and I had to go back and review. And what we did was we interviewed in open session, but we deliberated in executive session. Is that, is that any different?
I think so. I mean, that's obviously much more comfortable for council. I don't think it makes it any more comfortable for candidate. Uh they, they are working at the, at the pleasure of their boards or councils. And uh unfortunately, when I, and that's my confidentiality, I also push that really hard. Is I have not seen it go well for people who work, who sometimes are looking for other opportunities and their elected bodies find out.
Yeah, I would hate to lose a can, a good candidate.
And I don't think people will apply if they think it might jeopardize their job.
Yeah, I've expressed similar concerns.
Yeah, so and even if it makes it uncomfortable, they may not apply. It's an uncomfortable thing.
Yeah.
To have to talk to your employer when you haven't timed that appropriately, right? And let me just tell you something else that's been happening lately is as soon as an employer finds out that somebody's interviewing. They're backdooring them and saying, I don't wanna lose you. What am I gonna do to, so you give them plenty of extra time to start negotiating and making that person drop out of your recruitment process. So I think confidentiality is highly important to your success at this recruitment. And doing it in an executive session is gonna be extremely more beneficial to your community.
To that, I would like to see us adopt the interview questions then in public session as well. Um just so that we can engage feedback from our community to the greatest degree possible, if, if that's what this council assigns to do.
I think that that's interesting. I haven't actually ever heard that before. But I think you could still get there by identifying the same thing we just posed in a survey, what questions would be important for you to ask. But you have to understand that you're also getting the questions after the candidates, maybe just some of the candidates in advance. If they didn't recognize that you did that in public meetings, so is that a fair and equal process? Do you really wanna give those answers in front of somebody weeks in advance?
It can't be easy. It can't be easy.
I, I would recommend.
At all, yeah.
I would recommend not doing that. I think that you can ask some really great behavior-based questions and as long as you stick, here, here's the, the concept. When we identify the core competencies, both the technical and background, as well as the interpersonal ones that we've advertised from the recruitment. That then is supported by the surveys. Um or we added to based off of the surveys, right? And we design all the questions based off of the surveys and the core competencies that we said we were looking for. We ask behavior-based questions that get to their background in those core competencies. We're still doing it in a public environment because they've all agreed to the core competencies in the brochure. They all had an opportunity to weigh on in, on especially this question of what question would you ask? Um and also what are you looking for in an ideal candidate? And I think that's still doing it. And then we're designing questions around it. So it's a fair and equal and inclusive process when you use the same core competencies throughout the entire process. And in, in a perfect world, you should be weighing, you should measure, measure that person against their success in those core competencies at their review. Um that's really kinda how, if you wanna go full circle, uh those should be the things that you're measuring. Um to identify what they're doing well and where they can be improving.
That's great feedback. And I think Anna Byer, or Counselor Byers nailed it when she, you know, talking about building it into the interview. Um, all right, any other?
And to bring it around even further, if we use that as the matrix for scoring as well. So the, the feedback that we've received, uh answering the, the, the interview questions being part of, you know, what we've compiled. And then time our metrics in scoring those candidates full, full circle and transparent process.
Any other questions or comments on this, Counselor Perry Miller?
Uh well, actually not necessarily on this. I was gonna move on to another question. Is that, go ahead. Um so thinking through this like terminology with like the subcommittee being one thing and then potentially two interview panels. I, thinking about how it went two years ago, the subcommittee was the initial interview panel. And. I thought that worked really well. Um, I'm still trying to sort out my feelings about a potential second panel. Being able to weigh in, in a way where they could potentially not recommend candidates to the full council. That feels strange to me. Um. So I'm still, I have undeveloped thoughts about the second panel. But I do feel strongly that the first panel should definitely be the subcommittee. Or if not the subcommittee, a small committee of council that is not a quorum. How to.
Can I add a suggestion to, I think, maybe help you with your concerns? There's two different ways you can, you can have that panel participate. One is help us reduce this down to a smaller group, tell us what your ranking is, right? Which is what I think that you're feeling a little uncomfortable about. And the other panel is, is I just wanna hear what you really liked about them and what questions or concerns you have. And we're not asking you to rank the candidates, we just wanna hear your input on each of the candidates. So if you ask those two questions, what did you really like about the candidates, what questions or concerns could you have? That informs you to be able to take that back into your deliberation. It also informs you to ask some very specific, specific follow-up questions in your second round. I think that might help you if you wanted to include that panel, that might be the better way to go.
Yeah, because I think that we. Recommended certain candidates, but full council saw all applications. So it wasn't like they weren't seeing some people that applied that maybe we, you know, just didn't recommend for a second interview, if that makes sense.
So any council member, sorry?
No, I was just gonna say, and I missed remembering. Videos too. I think we did them on Zoom, didn't we? And then we um made this available to, to council. And then, and, and then we said, these are the, we reduced it or something like that. And, and then council did the interview of the.
We can certainly take the interviews, that's not a problem in Zoom. Um, the, obviously the other thing that you just mentioned though, sorry, I lost my track of that on that, on that last.
Oh, sorry. Was it that council was able to see everybody to the.
Oh yeah, thank you. So in our applicant tracking system, we can actually give you a spreadsheet that says, here's all the names. Here's uh their current titles. Here's their contact information or their degrees, other things like that, so we can get a spreadsheet. But any council member or mayor, if you're interested, we could give you access to the applicant tracking system. So you can go in there and look anytime you want and read the details of those applicants. If you really wanna be that much more involved and have a bigger understanding of what's, what's going on, right? So that's really easy.
Yeah, and I would love to jump in with my experience during the hiring process. You know, a hiring process is two ways, where the, not only is council interviewing candidates, but the candidates are testing out city if they wanna be there. And one thing that felt very lacking for me in the process was I did not have that kinda side stakeholder panel. Where I could get a sense of A, who are my peers gonna be? And B, who are the employees I'd be working with? And so I would like to just really strongly encourage that stakeholder recommendation panel or thoughts panel. Just so that the candidates can have the experience of A, who they work with every single day, which are the employees. And B, what their support system will be, say, you know, mine might be in Chris Clayton with the central point. But that would have been nice uh to have in that process.
I think that's a great idea. And you know, I think you could probably have both, where you could have the city managers on that virtual. Or, and then maybe, or staff on that virtual, giving you, what did you like, what questions or concerns you have? But you don't wanna take a whole day, and they're talking about a whole day of staff's time. But you could also do a meet and greet, we're getting back into that uncomfortableness, right? Um meet and greets, don't ask, we have maybe some like three or four platform questions, like who are you, what's your background, why are you here, why are you interested? Tell me a little bit about this, who are you as a leader, like really platform questions, really getting to those core top four or five core competencies you're looking for. And then we turn it over to candidates, say, what questions do you have for us? So that way the candidate gets to ask the employees, like tell us a little bit about, you know, what you're looking for either, or tell me. So that's what Jordan's talking about. And that's something that candidates do really, really like, and I think employees really appreciate as well. Um and then at the end of that day, that's when we don't ask a ranking. And the facility has to be really careful and say, listen, we are including you, but the decision is council. And you need to understand that, be okay with that. And those staff do, they, that's what they do all day long. They, they are, they do understand their role and they do understand that council gets to make a final decision. Their, their opportunities to inform, that's what staff do all day long. So I think that it's not gonna be a foreign concept. And I think the two questions you ask, again, going back to what we talked about is what did you like? What questions or concerns do you have, but not ranking them. And that way they're done with those final candidates. And I do think it's a really beneficial. And I'm really glad you brought that up because uh it's really beneficial to the hire, to the person coming on board. I also wanna encourage you uh when you get to those second day interviews that you do the same with council. That you have some structured questions because some council members have already met them. So they're still gonna have to talk about their resume and they're there as a leader and talk about those platform questions. You'll probably have some specific follow-up questions for each of them based on how they did day one. But I highly encourage you to spend at least fifteen or twenty minutes turning it over to a candidate and asking them what questions they have for you. And having that back and forth, more casual conversation, hopefully if you laugh, really kinda get to know each other a little bit. And have that back and forth conversation, you get to hear really what their questions are, which I think is also important to you. So I would encourage that to happen on day two as well in person. So those interviews tend to go a little longer because of that.
Counselor Perry Miller?
I feel like I'm dominating, but just briefly, based on what you said, thank you so much for the comment. Um, just to clarify my comment, I feel strongly that if there is a second panel made up of. Anyone that isn't council, that their feedback is absolutely wonderfully accepted. But I don't feel comfortable, sort of like you said Wendy, with them being part of the process of like. Honing in a number of candidates and potentially eliminating candidates, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, the panel, that would be the eliminating panel would be on a virtual panel. So that would be when you're actually bringing it down to a smaller group, okay? Um you could still change what I was talking about and make that instead, just uh what did you like, what questions or concerns you have? And you also could invite maybe just one subject matter expert to participate on the subcommittee interview panels. So you have that subject matter expert, maybe that's a peer. Um that just joins the subcommittee. And then we don't have any other panel on, but the only other panel we have is maybe a staff panel on day two, which I call it a meet and greet. And where they really understand their role and they get to share with you at the end of the day. These are some things we really liked about this candidate. At that point, again, we're talking about free usually. Um maybe it's one, but whatever it is, it's you get a chance to hear what their thing, their thoughts are, what you liked. Or what questions or concern you have, but they are not asking you to pare it down. We're not saying you hire this person. And you have a great facilitator over here, I'm sure she'll do a fantastic job or whoever else she has putting on both either of your two panels. Cause you'll also be interviewing the candidates in person that day as well. But that's what I would do and it's not ranking, not bringing them down to a smaller group or saying, hire this person. It's just saying, this is what I, this is what I would. These are things that we would, we want you to know.
Can I ask one more quick question? Okay, because just because you said earlier, the, the virtual day one would be. Ideally coming up with a list of like three or four to recommend to full council. So just to be clear, the subcommittee of council would be doing that.
Yes.
Pairing down, okay. I just wanna make sure I understood.
Yeah.
The, that's what we're. President, vice chair, mayor.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, anytime you're inclusive, it's a tricky thing to make sure that you don't lose the powers of authority to be able to make the decision you wanna make. And I think that as long as you just keep that in mind, that the decision makers are the only ones making the decision. Everybody else is taking a recommendation and that's, that's how we set things up.
I, and I would wanna hear, you know, when this is all honed down, I would wanna hear, you know, figure, as we get closer to how this is all gonna look, I'd wanna hear from RV cog. About what you're recommending as well.
Right, and I actually think that, that the cog would recommend. Uh Wendy's, the, the second one that you had mentioned, where we have the subcommittee for the virtual. And maybe a subject matter expert in there providing feedback. I think that would probably be.
Seems like after I've heard everything, I, I'm, that would, that sounds like that would work best, yeah. It would be the subcommittee and a subject matter expert, maybe another neighboring city manager. Um and no other panel on virtual. And what do you think about day two?
And I, I would still err on the side of caution of doing a meet and greet with the candidates and inviting. Uh I would see if maybe we can even brainstorm on another way to. Um, how you would see that going, cause I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant with just an open meet and greet. Again, and I know what you're saying of like, if, as long as the framework is tied in where, yes, you can make recommendations or tell us what you like. But ultimately the decision will be to council, I'd just be a little hesitant of a meet and greet just from past experiences.
And Mayor, are you okay if I ask Dave to weigh in on this? Cause I see um that he might have some opinions on it. Do you have some thoughts? Cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna advise on something that might be against the, the rules. Yeah.
Uh maybe even further response to the question we made earlier.
Okay.
You have a panel. Um. Then you're trying to have a set of obsession. And you include members of the problem. It can't be.
Okay.
Session.
Okay, that's almost right of that.
Uh so you gotta be careful.
Okay.
How you can do this.
Okay, yeah.
And it's.
So I take that back. Yeah.
You set up those.
Yeah, okay.
You could have a second session where you invite a subject matter expert you participate in that executive session. It still remains an executive session. But it can't be just, it needs to be in.
Yeah. So you could still have a second panel with a city manager, even if it's just one. Um, you don't have to have multiple people there. Just gives you a little bit of an insight.
I think that would be our recommendation. I like that for the having one subject matter expert.
Okay. That's um.
So the, we aren't gonna be deciding on panels today, but we'll hopefully be able to have, we've had enough discussion, I think, that you guys have at least a framework, I think. That you'll be able to, I won't be involved in those decisions. I'm just here to help. Get you a little further down that road. So that's gonna be what Adrian and he's gonna be working on with you to finalize.
Right, and and so just so that um I understand clearly, Adrian, we'll be looking for a recommendation. Does anybody see that differently from? From.
RV cog.
From RV cog.
Yes.
As our HR. Um, consultant.
Correct, great. Can we talk about dates next?
Yes.
Okay. So if we turn to the next page, page two, at the very bottom, we have two options for you. Again, we are delayed in being able to open up the recruitment by the thirtieth. We're gonna automatically be pushed out to the ele- to the eleventh. Um. But I just want to make sure that um you know that if it gets pushed out too far, we'll have to come up with a different timeline here. So these are the shortlist meeting, which the subcommittee would need to be informed about. We usually say like a two thirty, but I don't know if you want an evening meeting for the subcommittee, I mean, the shortlist. Do you have a recommendation? On the fourth or the eleventh? I think those are both regular meeting days, aren't they?
Um, the eleventh, I thought was the regular meet. Now, yes, for the fourth.
The fourth is.
Regular.
Yes. Do you have a timeframe and if these dates work for us, um, I'd like to know if you want to do that in a in an evening session, preferably?
Well, I think that, sorry.
Go ahead, Counsel Perry Miller?
I think that. Council Byers probably has the tightest schedule, so I want to know what works for you. Uh, for the fourth or the eleventh or the.
Or the actually, what I thought our choices were here when we chatted earlier was October fourth would be if they wanted the shortlist to go in front of full council. Otherwise, we could meet October eleven if it's just a subcommittee. If it needed to go, is that correct?
Yeah, but we already decided it's a subcommittee.
But it's a subcommittee.
Both times.
We could go with October eleven.
You want to go with the eleven?
Is that correct? We wouldn't need to squeeze it into a regular.
Right, that's true.
Regular meeting time work for y'all?
I just have parks at six thirty.
Oh, okay, so she meets with parks. Can you um be absent on that night?
I'm sure I can, yeah.
On the eleven?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so we would just, we wouldn't need to do then the public meeting, we wouldn't need to do it during the fourth council meeting. We could just individually do, or we can do a subcommittee on October eleven?
Well, just, I mean, just to be clear, I think that we could also probably do it earlier in the day on the fourth. If we wanted to do it sooner rather than later, just in case, but I don't want to speak for.
Yeah, I'm I'm available. I'm available for all, all of the.
OBL three of you that would need to be available for.
And what are your parameters?
I am not sure because I have two large events for my day job on the sixth and the seventh. So I cannot speak to what I will need to be doing on the fourth during the day.
I think it's better if we go to the eleventh and honestly, this is such a tight time timeframe for her. Yeah, I think that gives her a little bit more breathing room to get the candidates prepared for you and. Especially if you get a a lot of candidates on the last day of the recruitment.
Yeah.
So I think the eleventh is the better way to go. Okay.
Okay, so eleven subcommittee, okay, great.
And then how does the twenty third and first look? So we thought that if you had a shortlist on the eleventh. The twenty third is about a week outish. That gives you um the virtual interviews. And then a little bit extra time there to get the eleventh secured. And there's a lot of coordination that happens between the twenty third and the eleventh. But that means that the subcommittee would need to be available all day on the twenty third, or are we looking at a different date?
I'm I'm available all day on the twenty third.
Until the evening.
Until the evening.
Yeah, I am not, Mondays are my busiest days. And.
I'm gonna look at another, do you have a calendar?
I, we want to, um, do we want to work this out now or do we want to, do we want to work this off out offline? Do we need this as part of our vote tonight?
Think we should really try and get it to the other.
All right, sorry, we're, we're, I'm just. Uh, so we're six forty nine and our regular council meeting starts at six forty five. So if um.
This is the last thing.
Okay, let's.
Except for five minutes about the ideal candidate.
Very good. I can do a half day on the twenty third, starting at noon. And from there on out, I'm a, I can clear everything and be available.
Is there another date that's better for you?
The. Tuesdays are much more flexible for me in general.
The twenty fourth?
Yes.
Does that work for you?
Okay.
Mm-hmm. The twenty fourth, does that work for everybody else?
Yes.
All right.
Perfect, we'll do the twenty fourth with uh.
All day, if you could reserve your calendars right now, that would be fantastic. How does that November first look for everybody? For in person, that's usually from eight to two, or if you're gonna be doing it in the afternoon or evening, we need to know that as well.
That is also a council meeting date, just to let you know.
Okay. So the first, would you like to do that in the evening for your? Council meeting? Evening? Close session? I think that makes sense.
Say that again?
We'll do an evening close session on November first.
And during the regular council meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
So assuming we'll have three candidates, because it's usually what happens, um, just keep in mind that's five hours of time. That's a briefing, three interviews and a debriefing. So I just want to make sure you understand it's still five hours of time. Okay. So what does the evening hours look like? So just make sure, so she can send out invitations to everybody.
And this is for everyone?
Yeah, this is for the full.
Executive session.
Oh, November first is a full council.
Five hours.
Five hour executive session.
Yes, depending on how many candidates we bring forward from the virtual. Um, I like to prepare for three, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we have a a council, isn't it in the charter that we can't meet past a certain time to that?
Past ten PM. I would recommend doing a four PM start time.
Yeah. Doing four PM on November first.
Four to nine o'clock. And does that ever, does that work for uh everybody? Fantastic, okay.
Well, that was really easy. Thank you all. This was fantastic.
And you're gonna send out invitations on all of those?
Correct, yeah, we will block out your calendars during those times.
And Mayor, can we have five more minutes just to hear really quickly about the ideal candidate, which you prefer, since we're running late? That we just get that from you when we do either the one on ones or the one on threes?
Yeah. Yes, please.
Okay. All right.
Everybody good with that? Okay, so that's gonna happen, uh, Counsel Rider, on your regular meetings, like we do the Monday at four o'clock and. Whatever normal time you meet with uh Jordan, does that work for you? Okay, great. Um, all right, well, thank you, everybody. Thanks so much for a great meeting, very informative, really appreciate it. You all. Wendy, it's clear. So we're gonna adjourn this meeting at uh six fifty two and um we will call the uh council meeting to order at six fifty five.